Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I didn't catch anything that looked out of order. I'd make the motion we accept the minutes. All right, of April fifteenth.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'll get a, a motion in a second. Hearing that, hearing no further discussion, I'll put it to a vote. McLean?
Yes.
Calm?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is discussion on the subdivision regulations and the L D O.
So I kinda, as I told you guys in your email, our, our plan is eventually to go through the L D O as a whole. Um, have a third party company go through and, and suggest updates to it. Um, that's quite a big ticket. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar item. Um, so it's probably gonna get pushed a couple of years. So I'm hoping that in the meantime, we can kind of at least just go through review, make notes, make any changes that we see fit to help prepare that. Uh, a lot of things in the L D O currently are, are outdated. It was revised in twenty ten, but there's still uh, kind of some old things in there that, that don't quite mesh with today's trends on building or development or uh, even just to say since we've redone the comp plan here recently, a lot of things don't quite measure the comp plan. So I just wanted, uh, any input from you guys, uh, on any of the sections that you might have seen that something pops out, doesn't make sense, or you want me to look into more? Any comments are appreciated on that.
Have you run in, since you're in it on a day-to-day basis, have you run into things in this Article ten section that's created problems?
Not really in this. We haven't had it since I've been in there. We haven't had a whole lot of things subdivision developed. It's just been little stuff, so all of those aren't really near as intensive and don't need much design for thought when it comes to really the, I think the last thing would have been those three.
Yeah.
Um, which I, since last month, I've looked through these just to kind of post-review it and make sure that it fell into everything. And everything I've seen at least so far with it is, has meshed with it good.
We're kind of running out of land for big developments in town.
Yeah, we've got a couple. Um, the end of Heatherwood, about twelve acres. Um, some things that are gonna come up. Um, and I've ran some through Randy because that, that one was a big one before they put it on the market. That actually used to be dedicated to green space or the Heatherwood development. Um, so some things that would come up and it's not necessarily in subdivision regulations. It's in some of the other regulations that tie would be like the green space requirements, um, where it's a certain percentage. So that one in specific Heatherwood, um, block eleven, so like Cottonwood Court Drive is actually a planned unit. Um, so i- in reading some of the notes, it kind of made all of Heatherwood a planned unit, then that makes them have to have more green space. Um, and then we just, we don't have anywhere else to build out and it gets used for hay and um, since then, that block eleven has been replanted again to go back to single family houses. So, um, but there's some space. There's twelve acres there. There's twelve, eleven or twelve over by Country Club. Um, where Hill Crest and he'll top that in.
Mm-hmm.
There's that strip up there. And that's the same thing. It was all dedicated as, as green space back in the day. And now all it is, is I get complaints every year from the homeowners.
Yeah.
How tall it is. Um, and then up north of Rockwood, uh, we've got a little bit of land that's already annexed in. We're looking at um, the possibilities of annexing some more if, uh, we get a developer that wants to kind of do something.
Yeah.
Um, but that at least like with this, I don't see a ton of anything that jumps out at me really for this. It's a lot of little wording stuff that I don't think would hold, hold up a review or anything.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
And just looking through it, I, I didn't see anything that really jumped out that said, we've had problems with this over and over, or it's gonna hold up the development of something, you know?
Yeah.
In this particular article.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I figured is, you know, months where we're slow, we can just take a look at an article at a time and there's twenty seven articles in there. So yeah, plenty of them to go through. Um, and in our subdivision, one good thing about it is it's very generalized as far as being harmonious, you know? It doesn't call out specific things that would really hold somebody up.
Yeah.
Um, basically best practice. So as long as it makes sense and it flows with everything.
Yeah.
And that's good. So, and I did. Unless. And I didn't go. I read through pretty detailed the Article ten, Article fourteen. I haven't gone through quite as thoroughly. Um, I do know the, the set for state's development, the septic.
Yeah.
Uh, we have had some interest in some properties just outside of town, um, and interest in the, them being annexed in and, but they didn't want a septic because they're too far away from city sewer right now.
Right.
Um, so the way the L D O reads as a whole is, is as long as you are, I think, only four hundred feet away from the city sewer and the city doesn't plan on in the near future extending that, it's allowing, um, it does require in between Hedge Lane and Lot sixty nine, the lake mile watershed area, it doesn't allow for septic. Um, which is actually where one of these properties is. So, um, there's, there's some some hoops to jump through for some of these people, but I think it's still fairly well-intended and, and how everything's written in there. Uh, but like I said, I haven't gone through the rest of Article fourteen.
Yeah, I've.
Very in-depth.
Yeah, I just, I just don't remember having any real problems with any of the subdivisions as far as these art, this article impacting them at all.
Okay.
Do you, John?
No, I, I pretty well read through everything, kinda like you did. I didn't see anything one specific that was called a problem.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
That's, that's, uh, good.
We, you know, haven't worked through before.
Yeah.
I think when we get further into it, looking at some of the other chapters, there's gonna be some stuff in some of the other chapters.
Oh, yeah. There's stuff I run into on a daily basis where I kind of have to make a call that, okay, this doesn't pertain to this anymore.
It's been fifteen years since we've updated this and things have changed.
Yeah.
Tremendously in Paola as well as building standards and everything else in fifteen years.
Yeah. I do know one thing and it's, it's in another article is drainage. Um, but when we good thing about when we have a new subdivision, we send it off for a civil engineer review and everything. So drainage is normally pretty well locked down. That's, that's been the biggest, um, thing that's came up, uh, over the last few years since I've been here is they've been complaining about drainage in one area or another.
Yeah.
Um, but at the end of the day, they were all signed off by engineers. So.
I mean, it can be a big issue. Drainage can be a big issue around here.
Yeah.
The way stuff flows and, and some of the, where it flows to, you know, like coming north, north, coming down to Osage. I mean, Osage and all that water comes from the north there and a little, just like when Lake Mary changed their drainage deal, that can have a big impact on all the way downstream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Never been addressed.
Yeah.
Waiting for, waiting for the big rain to happen and it'll be again.
Yeah, they're, uh, they actually just recently approached me to change their detention pond, the one that they had to build for the new, uh, dorms.
Uh-huh.
Into some sort of basically big corrugated pipe. It's like a covered detention pond. So it, it's held in pipes and containers. And then they can plant grass over the top of it so it doesn't get all swampy. And I don't know, I had never heard of it before and.
There's a there's something similar to that here in town, but it's, um, at Osage Terrace Apartments.
Okay.
Under the parking lot. There are, you remember this, John? There are big concrete vaults under the parking lot in order to handle the flow of water coming off that area and not flood everything down that little creek thing. Underneath there, there's various vaults and like when this one fills up, then it drains into the next one and drains into the next one so that it slows the flow of water coming out of there to, uh, keep it from flooding over there by, uh, the home center and all down through there. Yeah, that was the only way they could figure out to handle the runoff.
Without.
And doing that, yeah. I think they're underneath the parking lot if I remember right.
Pretty, pretty extensive deal.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting the way they figured that all out and hid it underground. And so this is kind of probably similar, but instead of using concrete vaults, they're using corrugated pipe type of storage units maybe.
Interesting.
But it, yeah, it was just to slow the flow down because this one wouldn't get, this, the next one wouldn't start filling until this one was full. And then it just all the way down. And by the time all of them got full, hopefully the rain would have slowed down enough that now they slowly drained out into the end.
Hmm, I'll have to look back at that.
Yeah, look, look, sure it's in the design somewhere in the.
Oh, it is.
In the folders.
Septic systems designed that way too.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, uh, especially big city sewer.
The lake.
Yeah. Concrete, uh, are the same way. They drain, fill up the big one and then leak, let it out in a smaller pipe. Culverts, city culverts are very similar to the same principle.
Correct. So, yeah, I told them, if you can get an engineer to propose something, I'll send it off to our engineers to review it. So, so that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, I know they're having a lot of problems, I think, with the kids jumping in the mud because it's just, it's always a morgue there.
Oh, yeah.
So, and that's what they're designing for.
And that's really why they took that pond out of there to start with was because of the kids drowning, almost drowning or drowning or whatever. And then it was always a risk.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yep, but didn't know there was at least new ways to do things. You have the old detention pond. I don't know. I don't know whatever came of that was right before, right when I first got here for codes.
Oh, when that first detention pond went away?
Uh-huh. They filled it in, right?
Yeah, they filled it in and they didn't have a state permit to do that because it was over an acre.
Yeah.
And nothing ever happened, but the, uh, they just went ahead and did it without state. Whereas the country club, when they did theirs over there on the north side, they got all of the right permits from the state and everything.
Yeah.
Which I'm glad because I have some.
Right, yeah, your access downstream from.
Yeah, I'm downstream from there. That would not have been good.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I don't have anything on. Okay. Anybody else haven't seen anything? Well, why haven't you seen?
I heard a rumor that the V A I VAC or Highmark, what they call it, out of there, gotten some water problems in the flooring.
Really?
With that detention pond powder that was placement.
That's higher than, that was the building.
I don't know how. That was a question when all that was developed and we mentioned that we didn't think it could ever work. And we kept telling us, yeah, it'll work, it'll work.
They, they moved the outlet to it and re-engineered however they did that. I sent it back for review again and it all passed again. So, yeah, I don't know.
When we went.
I just, I just heard that this week.
Interesting.
Through a bunch of, uh.
Didn't they rerun it between, under the, between the road and under the sidewalk in the building? Remember we, I remember we talked about that in the water re, re-we.
Oh, initially?
Yeah, there was, I remember something about that.
Well, initially they had the outlet pipe lined up with the bill, like shooting straight out.
Well, if they were gonna, if the pond upstream ever overflowed or the dam broke on it, it would overcome that detention pond in a, in a heartbeat and wash right through. But I, I can't verify anything, but I've, I think I've heard that there's some talk about
Really?
seepage coming up through the flooring.
Hmm.
You know, I, I can tell you, when we went through, that'd be a nightmare, I would say. We have the building, somebody would recreate that water. On the.
Uh, well, and I know they went through.
East side of the road, but the west side of the building.
Initial build of it.
Which is.
Block or apartment structure.
It just never seemed right from the get-go.
I know. Well, you gotta leave your faith, I guess, in the engineers, but.
Yeah.
Because they know more than me, but.
Let's go.
I need for.
Uh, yeah, you're right, right. It didn't look, look right.
And it could be the water tables.
Yeah.
Pretty high in that area.
It's higher than the, you know, the footings.
You know, that shuts down in there. They dug a lot of dirt out of there.
And it's not clay.
No, so.
It's. What about the, uh, church across from the fire station? That's grown up weeds and stuff.
So actually I got that one redone on the, uh, update, which I guess we can kind of go into.
Yeah, they closed.
Yeah, let's go to that. We'll go to the community development, economic development director's report. So I will start with that one. Um, so they have contracted with governmental assistance service, services, their grant writing company, um, to apply for the C D B G grant. Uh, one of those requirements for that grant is that it is designated a blighted property for dwelling. I would assume that that's part of it. Um, we've actually, we've had two or three resolutions through council now uh, for support of them on it, the designated blighted property. And then we've got one more, I think, um, to go through before he can even apply for the grant. Um,
Did somebody want to, is that the one that somebody wanted to make an event center on?
Yeah, that's still the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, G W Weld. He owns several other old buildings in, uh, I want to say Udora. I think that's right.
Yes.
That he's fixed up.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's still the plan. Uh, C D B G's is very, very specific on what you can do with the money. Um, they want a lot of it to go to making it prettier, um, which is why they have to go through that process. Um, so yeah, as of now, he got it on the historic registry. That was, was lots of speed bumps to get over in it. Um, but I think they just now might have changed the plans on it. Um, just in like where they were gonna put some of the walls and that makes them have to go through the whole process again. So we have to do resolutions again and everything. So it's, yeah, it's in the process. Um,
Yeah, you, you would think they keep up the outside of it for parents' lives. And I just, somebody told me about it. I drove by and wow.
The, yeah, the way, what I've heard through C D B G, the way it works is, is basically the uglier the building, the more likely you're gonna get the grant. Same thing with like the heel grant. They only want to help buildings that are falling down or buildings that are in need. You're not as in need if you're pretty and this is just to help a business owner out basically. So that's just from what I've heard. Um, that is, that is one that, that, uh, I've kind of just been on the, a fly on the wall with. Um, so we're up to three hundred and six permits. Um, oh, and that was I guess of last week. Uh, this time last year, we were only at two twenty. So we're way, way out of where we've been the last few years. Had a few, I think, had three new house permits last month. Yeah, one right over here on Sundance. Uh, one in Rockwood, one in Heatherwood. Uh, and then we've, we've had a new permit in an infill lot, getting a little bit more interested in infill lots.
Good.
Um, so it's helping use that construction incentive to give a break on the uh, new ice cream shops open on the square. Everything I've heard on it, it's good.
It's good.
Good.
Ice cream pie is good.
Yep.
My ice cream is good.
Been great. Uh, I know they were really, they're still really busy, so.
People are using the square, getting their ice cream, living around the square, which is nice.
My hope was that, that they'd go there.
They do, yeah. It was full Sunday night.
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's good and cold.
Yeah. Um, the owner, I talked to him on their opening day. Um, they said, we'll have to watch the trash cans on the square. It will be filling up a lot quicker. They had that problem involved when they had their pad. Good problem to have.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, A E C getting closer to completion. They got the water meter in. They've got the building pretty well finished up. They have to do some of the finishing touches on the office area. But big metal buildings, so it goes up pretty quick. But it looks really good out there. It does definitely a big difference from just a empty field. Uh, be good to have another business in town. Uh, Casey's tanks and canopies are in the process of being removed. They started yesterday on the one on hospital. Uh, I think they're gonna start on Silver next Monday. I, I told you guys, I think when I was watching the last meeting that we had, we talked about it some on what could go in there, what was gonna happen with them. Cause I was excited to try to find, try to find other businesses to go in there and not have it boarded up. Unfortunately, the way Casey's does it, uh, it takes a while before they go back on the market. Uh, they put deed restrictions on the properties um, as a non-compete. So nobody can sell food. Um, any convenience items. They can't sell gas anymore. So it couldn't ever be a restaurant or or a gas station, right? I think normally they're for fifteen years. Yeah.
Or they just keep owning it, paying the taxes and let it sit there?
They'll, they'll put them up for sale. They'll get bought by somebody. I'm trying to, and I've been working with their, their real estate agent, trying to set up businesses for when that time comes so they can jump on it and it doesn't just sit. But yeah, I know, uh, hair salons, I think, are a big thing that goes in those. Uh, so, yeah, just trying to facilitate that as much as I can. That way they don't sit after that because I already don't like looking at them empty right now. But it's not a good feeling. But unfortunately, our hands are kind of tied with, with that one. Uh, we've had some lot mergers, seven oh five East Shawnee is the one that, uh, we had the design review on. Uh, there was a little strip of property next to it, uh, that they wanted to merge in. So I'm working on it right now. I just sent these, but now, because we have a sewer line goes through there. So they should, once that's all recorded, they should, uh, be ready to submit plans and get to building on that. That'll be a cool one to see come up. Uh, six oh nine West Shawnee. It's a building, it's not there anymore. Um, right across from the cemetery, I think it used to be a plumbing supply.
Oh, it used to be Debrich's.
Was it Debrich's?
It, it's just like, it's a. Oh, it's their foundation now?
Yeah, just the foundations there.
Yeah, that was part of Debrich's Plumbing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so the owner of it, he, over the last couple of years, that building is actually three parcels. So he's been slowly buying each one and tracking down owners and got it, got that demolished and he's wanting to put up, um, as far as I know, a metal building to use or to lease out for some sort of business. Um, at least for your purpose area since it's not a old rotten building anymore, which is good.
Yeah.
And zoning pretty well works out with that area. It's a, it's an N C R two district, but it allows for like a light auto or something like that with the C U P. So there's quite a bit of business opportunity there with the right person. It's way off the beaten path. So.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they'll take the right business, but be a good spot for a small business at least. Um, Lemon's Out Pearl, I don't know if I talked to you guys much about this. Um, it's about Rusty Walters.
Hmm, yeah.
Farm Bureau. Uh, Brad Grandin is working on getting permits for three apartments up there. Uh, we're almost there. I just sent the revised plans back today. It's been a, been a struggle. Uh, but, uh, he, he didn't have very good luck with his first architect. So, uh, but we're getting there. Uh, council approved balcony posts come down. So those are, two of those apartments will have balconies that are overlooked that alley. Um, and then he has plans either for him or somebody else to come in and do like a small, small restaurant, um, an E D's coffee shop type of thing on the backside of that building. There's a, the back third of the building is, is empty right now. So be good to put that to use. Um, Fire Chief Andy Markle is retired and now former deputy chief, Bruce Hardy is the chief. I've worked with them, sent them on a couple like that, uh, project and seems like we're gonna have really good head on his shoulders and be, uh, great to move forward with. He's been here for a long time. So he knows the area and he's also, I don't know if he's a captain or higher up, might be a deputy chief up in Alata. Actually, he has a lot of higher knowledge. Um, public wifi is all turned on. I don't know if you guys have seen the signs or not, but that's square at Wallace Park. I think they're still working on, I don't know if you guys have tried to hook up good or not, but it's a little bit of a process. Um, they're working on that kind of a help landing page. Um, but it's, it's faster speeds than in my house. So it's
There you go.
Be good to give something to let people utilize those areas. Nick Hard reached out not too long ago and submitted his application for the infrastructure of Borough Three we planted last year.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then they've been calling and locates out there and he's already, all of his plans and everything were submitted with the plat. So they were already all approved and thought it'd be good to get it built out and see if we can get some developers in there to build some bigger houses back there. City Council, we were talking about dangerous structures earlier. The barn at six ten East Cascasia was, can't really tell it. It's barn. It's all overgrown at the top of the hill. Um, we've been working on the dangerous structure process. From the start, it's probably been March of last year. Um, and we got it, uh, approved and Gallon's got the bid on it. So thinking mid-August probably for demolition of it. Um,
Yeah, it's a, got a couple vines and it'll come down.
That's what everybody's been saying. That's, that's sure what it looks like. It, uh.
You won't even have to bring any equipment in.
I know.
Got the vines and let it fall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm shocked that it stays up in the winter time when they die.
Yeah, it, it's.
It's, uh, it just looks like a big mound of vines right now.
It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, that it stayed up.
Yeah.
So, um, oh, I did put the one ten East Fury on there. Um, that was something that was going through council for resolutions. And we've got some good news. We've got some applications through planning commission for some C U Ps.
All right.
Um, so the old Sonic El Pot, uh, the owners are wanting to do, uh, refrigerated storage for their fruit special, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And they have, uh, they're kind of self-contained units. So it wouldn't be inside the building, but it would be under the canopies. I think they'd have one on the back and one on each side. Um, they're essentially like a shipping container prepackaged unit. Uh, they wouldn't be selling out it just for their restaurants. Um, so refrigerated storage and the thoroughfare access, they have to have a C U P. So.
Yeah.
They've been talking about it for a while and finally got their application in. So that will be at next month's meeting. And, uh, and then the auto dealership in the downtown area, uh, Sounds a lot scarier than it is. A gentleman purchased one of the. Buildings just to the west of the square on Peoria. Uh, and his, he has to get a dealership license through the state because he sells so many vehicles a year. But I think what he does is he arranges the sales. And then goes to auctions, buys them, and then he has a transport company, so. The dealership is just to kind of help his transport company, cause then he transports them directly from the auction to the new buyer. So there won't be, they'll have two spots. I think they have to have some dedicated parking for vehicle sales. But it won't be a full-on dealership out there, not really rooted for one. But, yeah, the the state requires zoning to sign off on it, and since it wasn't approved views, he just has to go through this to. Yeah, allowed, so that's something that I'll be doing the review and then making some suggestions on how much parking. It it won't be very intense. It'll be more of an office space for him than anything. That's all I got, all I think of at least.
Updates you can mention about. Now on the south part of town.
Uh, next to the.
Yeah.
Uh, he's actually, have you been down there the last few days?
Well, they had our, our parking lot, he's had our alley full of. Full of some of his junk that they haul off today.
Okay, so he was supposed to be hauling it off. He's kind of staged it out there, cause it's so big that he has to get big trailers in there to get it out of there. Uh, but he's made more progress in the last month than he's made the last three or four months. So, get a lot of stuff out of there, it just takes time.
Yeah, it just. Seems like ten years it's been in the works and.
Yeah, it's been acquiring things for ten years too.
Yeah.
Though really since. Yeah, and I think in the past, it was more or less just keeping that parking area out in front of it where everything collected. Clean and I've kind of done the more deep dive and gone to really start getting rid of stuff. There's, there's so much stuff there, it's gonna be. It's gonna be a long, long process for sure. But, yeah, I I check in every month with him. We go to court every month.
I know there's a lot of. Legion members pretty upset with him blocking that alley off since it's.
Is it blocked off currently?
Well, where he's pulling the junk out, that's our parking lot where we demolished that house and built the parking lot.
So, okay, so I didn't see anywhere that was. Where I had seen it was in the actual alley.
Yeah.
Yeah, where I had seen it, so. When you come off of Delaware there, that. Kind of alley where he backs trailers and everything.
Yeah, he basically blocks that alley.
Everything I had seen at least was up by the tree line. And so that's all in the city alley there. So, and. The city is giving him. A little leeway to get stuff out of it. If we make him. Try to back a trailer into the wood, nothing's ever gonna happen. We have to have a little leeway as far as letting him get some stuff out of there. But whether it be in a city alley. Right, he can, he can put stuff there temporarily while he moves it. And I don't know, do you look at, have you seen Beacon? The on up, the county GIS map that shows that alleyway up there? If you look up even further, there's a whole bunch more stuff.
Oh, yeah, there's a building buried back in there too.
So, yeah, making progress.
Yeah, that building's probably isn't safe.
Yeah, it's just one thing at a time. Can't, can't uh. Can't really come to that from all angles all at once, otherwise we don't get any progress. And then you had mentioned previously about the grandstand, the old grandstand building. I had wrote him a ticket too, so we have court on cleaning that up. He's gotten. Uh, several, well, almost all the vehicles out of there, outside of the bins. He's got just a few more left to get out from the inside. I talked to him about what his plans were for the property and. He would like to open up a used car dealership down there. Uh, right now, I've let him just use the inside of the building for storage since it's shielded from everything. Yeah, he's fixed the roof on the building, so. It's at least not leaking and deteriorating, um but he is, he's getting all the cars out of there. The only two cars that you'll probably see there are gonna be those old cars that are his personal cars that he stores there. Hopefully, we can get get a business back out of it.
They uh. Now, I guess there was no problem, which I didn't quite understand, Bill Farbier building. Was a commercial building. And yet. The people are living in it and they got what the lawn care business with a lot of stuff parked all the way around the building.
So it's it's a residential property now. Um, it got switched over through the county. Through all the utilities, everything, um and with it being a residential property. It's essentially considered a home-based business. Um, it'd be like me having a lawn care company and having a bunch of parking, adding my whole yard gravel, basically. And parking stuff in it. It's it's an odd deal. It's it's definitely out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
But uh, yeah, he's, he's all good zoning. He's actually, they've got a daycare there now. Um, they're all licensed through the state. Yeah. He's even looked into trying to section off and rent out like one of the rooms for an apartment, and that's where I kind of. That's where our zoning regulations didn't quite align with it. But. He's a very busy guy. He's. Yeah, most of the loan jobs around town besides uh the grounds, grounds category.
Yeah. What's his company's name, do you know?
Uh, I can't remember. Jeffrey Shartz Junior. I think it's at your service lawn care, let's say.
Yeah.
He's actually the one who most back in the country club, Big Field.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions about anything going on around town? I know I try to go through my emails and after a couple of months, it's been, everything kind of. Run disappears, so.
Yeah, what are they doing on the square by the pond or by the fountain?
Uh, the drain to the fountain is leaking, so they had to dig it up and put a valve in and repair it. Cut out a bunch of concrete to do it.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah. Not fun on that thing, but I don't know, I think where they're, the way they're fixing it now. They shouldn't have to do that again. It should be out in the grass.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Now they gotta scramble to get it done. Everything goes on the square with the parade.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I just thought of something else. What does it, like down Pearl Street? There's a. Well, in the city's easement, next to the curb, or real close to the curb, when there's dead trees. Is that property owners? Where it looks like the last windstorm. Some of them fell down around on the sidewalk.
Where at, Earl?
Oh. Well, the, just south of the old Eric Gray building, that house on the corner there. Looks like they're elm trees. I just wondered about, you know, that every time there's a windstorm, there's limbs and stuff fall out of them.
So.
Is that a property owners deal or?
It depends if the, if the tree is located within the right of ways cities, um cities deal, and after, after storms. Public works goes around, drives around and picks up all that. Um, and generally, we allow property owners on their personal trees that have lost limbs to drag them out. Yeah, they they constantly go around. Um, dead and dying trees, uh, we have a list.
Yeah.
They're constantly, they they remove as many as they can each year. Uh, if they can do it themselves. Then then they'll cut them down, uh, but a lot of times we have to contract them out if it's gonna be close to a house or something. But I I will write that down to let them know, see if it's on their list. We get, like I said, it's a long list, so.
Oh, I I just thought about it, you know, somebody in a windstorm and they're walking the sidewalks. You know, for a liability standpoint of the city or the property owner or who. Seems like it'd be proactive to go ahead and cut them flush and be done with them.
Yeah.
Picking up a limb every time the wind comes.
Yeah, well, there's a couple on uh Osage too, that are, that are old, that are on the list to get done, so. Yeah, we try to prioritize them in the. Ones that need done quicker, for sure. But uh, that's one thing that we have changed um in our. Landscaping requirements for new houses. It used to be that you have to have a street tree, a right-of-way tree. That's what we wanted, all these trees in the right-of-way and. Yeah, they buckle up sidewalks, oh, yeah, and everything, so we internally have changed that to just a street yard tree, just a tree in the front yard. Uh, to keep that kind of landscaping up front, but keep it out of, out of the right-of-way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, now that the state wants to get rid of red butter trees.
Oh, really?
I think it's red buds that break so easily.
No, it uh Bradford pear.
Bradford pear, yeah.
And they're they're spreading out into the country.
And I didn't realize a lot of people are allergic to them. I know, a couple friends of mine, yeah, a couple friends of mine, uh, grabbed allergic reactions to the wind was blowing, but.
Yep.
Yeah. But I'll definitely mention that area to, I'll work and have to go check it out. Cause yeah, if they're in the right-of-way, then then it'd be on us to get them taken down.
Yeah, I was thinking of that one house I'm telling you, I think it just sold. And yet you go by there and there's three big trees. That are dead.
I pulled up here, I'm just trying to picture it on street view. I've run by there and see. I do know there's one smaller tree right in that area. I think it's Chipwall though. That has one that always loses, it's a, it's a lost ball.
Yeah, there's one on the west side of the street further back this way that always drops something out.
Shoot, I think I picked up a limb from that tree. Those police officers crossing the road there.
Alright, anybody have anything else? Alright, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, you got a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. We'll put it to vote.
Complete.
Aye.
Aye.
Ares.
Aye.
Howard.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're adjourned.